I'd like to welcome everyone to our September 9, 2020, Virtual Special Budget Meeting of the City Council. Once again, remind you that we're conducting this meeting using communication media technologies authorized by Executive Board of the Governor during this current pandemic. We appreciate everyone's patience and assure you that our council remains committed to providing the public a fair and reasonable opportunity to participate in these meetings. We certainly appreciate your continued understanding as we work through this temporary manner of conducting meetings. To tonight's meeting participants, as the Presiding Officer requests that each council member or designated staff member request that they be recognized by me before speaking, I'll do my best to quickly recognize and call upon you. All participants should use the mute function and only unmute yourself when you seek to be recognized to speak while you are speaking. I'd like to remind you that this meeting is being broadcast to the public and therefore we request that you eliminate any background distractions you may have at your location. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes. The rest of the council, as such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council groups, shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you. Thank you for participating in your city government. With that introduction, I call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
Our first item on the agenda are public hearings. Item number one, Madam Clerk, will you please read the item?
The first of two public hearings for Resolution Number 2020-214 R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final ad valorem tax mileage for the City of St. Cloud for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, the same being adopted prior to the adoption of the final budget for said period of the final mileage.
Um, who do we have to speak to this item?
Ms. Colazo.
Ms. Colazo, you, you have the floor.
She's actually Mrs., I'm sorry, name.
Mrs.
I appreciate that. Let me share my screen. Good afternoon. It is my pleasure to introduce the Resolution Number 2020-214 R, which is the final ad valorem mileage presentation for the fiscal year 2020, 21. I will share my screen now, so you have the reference. On the screen at this moment, you should be seeing the background for the final ad valorem. As per Florida statute 200, 065, there should be two public hearings that are required to adopt the final ad valorem tax mileage for the City of St. Cloud, at which point this fiscal year is slotted at 5.1128, which is a 5.69% above the rollback rate of 4.8377. This 5.1128 tax mileage, uh, ad valorem, excuse me, tax mileage rate is the same as it has been for the last five years and continues to do so in the presentation of fiscal year 2021. I will move through the presentation. If you have any questions at any point, I would like to stop me. Please do so, and I will answer any questions that should arise.
I don't see anyone wanting to ask any questions at this point.
Following next slide is the mileage rate history just as verification of the well, the last five years at the 5.1128 rate, as you can see listed there, which is the adopted mileage rate in blue. The rollback rate for the same year spanned of five years is also listed there for reference, beginning at 4.91 to 4.8231 and moving forward all the way to 2020, 2021 with a 4.8377. And I will give you some notes on that or any questions that you may have on that rate. Okay. Um, as statistical information, I'll move to the next slide for you. And the final ad valorem tax mileage rate on this slide, again, 5.1128. This is needed to fund the following increases in the fiscal year 2021 proposed general fund budget. This is a 9% increase. There was in personnel costs that totaled 3.3 million, 544,000, 002. That 3.5 million is broken down to 11 new positions totaling 565,116 fully burdened. 9% increase across the board in medical insurance totaling this year 377,991. Increase in retirement contributions based on actuarial reports totaling up 1,156,232. Physician reclassifications that have happened and will continue to move into the fiscal year 2021 at 1,370,812. And then other operational costs miscellaneous is 73,851. And if I stop, it's just a, just waiting for anybody's question.
I don't see any interest to want.
Thank you. Uh, next slide. Um, it's just a staff recommendation and approval of this Resolution 2020-214 R. City Council's requested action is the approval of such resolution as well. And I'm open to any questions on the final ad valorem tax mileage rate for fiscal year 2020, 21.
Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk is, oh, okay, Ms. Matheny, Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I can wait if you need to go to the other.
Yeah, let me ask from the public, is there anyone in the chamber or online that is wanting to speak to the, uh, this resolution?
Mayor, I don't have anyone listed online to speak for this item, and I don't have anyone in the chambers at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. Then we'll have discussion and our motion by council, councilmember Matheny, you want to speak?
Yeah, um, so we had some outstanding items from the first review. I was just wondering if you could go through all those and kind of indicate how they were addressed. I know I have a couple of notes written down here. I don't know if I have the entire inclusive list, but I just kind of wanted to understand what changes were made.
Okay, so the only changes here in this series of this resolution, final ad valorem, because the next resolution is actually the budget. So that's why I had to stop on it, if that's okay, deputy. But in reference to the final ad valorem, one of the requests through the budget workshops was an explanation of the mileage rate at 5.1128. The trim values that were reported were, and I'm going to say this really large number, so I'm going to go with it, 2393594718 were the existing values. This was an increase of 149,704,671. This was also due to new construction, which wanted to be, this has been represented in the budget message as requested for ad valorem at 218,000, 027,437. And this produced 2,761,326,826 per 1,000 mils, multiplied by the current mileage rate of 5.1128 at a 97% collection rate, which is 1% higher than last year, is what we're budgeting ad valorem at 13,694,564 for this, 68, excuse me, for this year. That is the update in reference to ad valorem. This positive increase is over 17% from the 2019, 2020 tax revenues, primarily due to that new construction improvement as well as increase in property valuations this year. This, uh, the implementation, there was also asked through the ad valorem to give a synopsis of an implementation of a rollback rate for the fiscal year 2020 and 2021. That has been reported, the rollback rate at 4.8377 would produce a reduction of 729,255 to the general fund budget. The resident effect would be $60.61 savings to the current rate with an average property value of 222,000, and that would produce an average total tax of 1,074.44 on the average property tax value. Those changes have been made in reference to the budget workshop and 824 as directed by council.
You have anything else, Councilmember Matheny?
No, I'll wait till the next section for the other items.
Do we have any other discussion? Could I entertain a motion then?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny to approve Resolution 2020-214 R. We have a second from Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And just to remind everybody, this is the first of two public hearings, so you will be going through this, one more public hearing at the, at your 24th council meeting.
Yes, sir. Brings us to item number two. Madam Clerk, will you please read it into the record?
First of two public hearings for Resolution Number 2020-215 R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final budget for the City of St. Cloud for fiscal year 2020, 2021, same being adopted following the adoption of the final mileage rate for said period.
Ms. Colazo?
Yes, good evening, Councilwoman, Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Resolution of 2020-214, for Florida's statute.
Keep sending the register to this one, to this one.
Required to adopt the budget each fiscal year by ordinance and/or resolution.
Oh, my God, it's my best friend calling me again.
Block forward must equal, spending revenues must equal expenditures. To begin, first slide. Revenue in millions, the first change noted.
Excuse me just a minute. Someone needs to mute their microphone. Everybody needs to mute their microphone, except for the speaker, please. I'm sorry for interruption. Continue on.
No problem, Mr. Mayor. Um, as I was saying, the, I will outline the changes that were noted in the budget workshop that have been reflected now in the budget. The first major change was the original budget was set at 179,113,113,250. It was reduced by 175,000 as requested by the council to defer the chamber project and complete the project in this current fiscal year versus the 2021 fiscal year. That created a new total budget for the City of St. Cloud to be 178,938,250, which is a 1% overall increase over the adjusted budget. The second change proposed in the budget was, um, there was an error of, it listed the 2020, 2021 amended, I'm sorry, adopted budget. It should have said proposed. That change has been reflected in the budget message as directed by council on page 12 of the new budget message. A description of all element number 31, professional services across all funds and cost centers was requested by council in order to establish the variances. Those were emailed and sent over to each council member along with the budget message reflecting everything that was spent in professional services and the variances justified, including any budget transfers done from the such elements within the department and division. Additional changes coming on page 13. We added fund descriptions as instructed by the notes on the workshop. This created, in the explanation of what governmental accounting system and what type of fund accounting we are using, including demonstrating our legal compliance and assisting, uh, in explaining the governmental, uh, the enterprise and all internal and fiduciary funds and their purposes to begin with the general fund, moving on to every other fund, special revenue funds from the 100 series all the way through the 645 fund. All editing items were done as far as percentages were fixed. There was on page 13, 14, a spacing issue. All those and grammatical errors, if any, were noted, were fixed. The changes reflected to reducing the budget to by 175,000 has been reflected in all the graphics that are listed within page 13, as well as 14. We have listed the nine positions in the general fund by number and by fund as instructed by the workshop, including the operating costs and the makeup of those expenditures within the fiscal year 2021. All enterprise funds, we ensured that all total budget numbers correlated with those reported and also added a graphical representation of those expenditures by personnel, operating capital, debt service, transfers, and contingency, giving you a total budget graphical representation as well as numerical representation of all the budget as instructed through the workshop. In the building fund, um, due to some of the changes that were being done, we also added the revenue report and graphic design of it on page 16 as instructed. That revenue was also dissected by types in building permits, miscellaneous fees, technology fees, and operating interest and graphically displayed in conjunction with the expenditures for 2020, 2021 for the building fund. After going through 2,175,000 lines during the budget workshop, those are all the changes. Everything has been emailed and updated. Reports are listed in the J-Drive and the common share of the new budget with these changes as directed. Moving in the presentation that you see forward, our revenue in millions are displayed with the update at 178.9 million. The general fund takes in 54 million of that rounded. That's 30% of the budget of revenue going into the general fund. Special, special revenue funds are represented in red at 35.4 mil with 20% of it. Debt service in green is represented at 4 million at 2% of revenue. Capital project funding is at 4.3 million or 2% of budget, revenue budget. And then utility funds is the teal color at 70.6 million for 40%. Economic development is the small sliver you see on your screen in orange at, at 0.4 or 400,000K. Unfortunately, the percentage does not round up, but it's 0.7 if you want to be exact. And the CRA coming in at a light blue of 1.3 million or 1%. And then finally, the internal service funds capturing $9 million or 5%. I will stop if there are any questions at this point that I have not addressed, just representing revenues and/or the changes that were described in the budget workshop.
Are there any questions at this time?
I have one.
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, Wendy, I'm not sure you mentioned it, maybe I missed it. The $198,000 we discussed on the last round that was shown for the chamber renovation, did that get removed from the budget?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry for not mentioning that. Yes, it did. And also, um, I, I thank you for reminding me as I look at my notes here. We also changed the dollars from the community care grant to the transition houses, you instructed, the naming of it going towards that. That got changed, so my apologies for not mentioning that for you.
Great, great. So I have one more, um, request idea. See if the council goes along with it. I've been talking to the city manager a lot with all of this rain that we've been getting and the flooding that we've been experiencing, um, specifically on the grid. And I would like to see if we could maybe pull $200,000 out of our stormwater utility fund and earmark that for drainage study down in the grid to come up with some fast, productive interconnects and improvements down there to, to help with the drainage. I know that the city has been coordinating with the Florida Department of Transportation about the flooding issues that have been occurring on US 192 since the widening project, um, was over. And they have their staff reviewing, going back and doing a drainage basin analysis of the roadway. And I've asked the city manager and Nassim to like put a timeline on, on them to, to respond back to us, not to just like put us down in a, we're on a list somewhere because we could push politically if we needed to, but give them a chance to, um, you know, come up with a solution. But I would like to see if, if, if two other council members agree with me, I'd like to pull $200,000 out of stormwater utility and reach out to one of our continuing services engineering firms and, and get some quick improvements underway for the flooding.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
So, so Deputy Mayor, um, is that from the wastewater fund? Because it is affecting our wastewater system.
Yeah, if you could pull it from there. I know there are several homes that now every time it rains, you can't flush the toilet, which is a major problem. And also, I've seen some flooding coming out of manholes lately, sanitary manholes. So, you know, I do think the drainage is impacting the sanitary sewer system. So that's more of a funding, I guess, mechanism. If you feel like it could be covered by that, I'm, I'm fine with that, too.
Then, yes, Mayor, and the other question, since we're in a budget hearing, Mr. Manager, do we need to do that as a motion and have a vote on that?
Okay.
Well, again, this is, this is the first of two public hearings on this, on the budget item. So if this is some direction that you can get, then we can bring it back at the next council meeting with those changes being included for final adoption.
Okay, thank you. So does that, does that need to be a motion voted on?
Well, I think what we'd like to see, if there's enough direction to follow with Deputy Mayor Matheny's suggestion, if, if that's something that's the council as a whole.
I would certainly support it. Do we have any other, Mr., Mr. Cooper, Councilman Cooper, is supportive of that? So you have three votes. All right, thank you. That's clear. I, I heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Colazo?
Yes, sir. And one final note to update on a change that I had, I, I had not noted just for, wait, I'm sorry, I'm just scrolling down to make sure I have the correct verbiage for you all. Updates were listed as Councilman Trace requested in the budget workshop to add the ship funding, the COVID dollars that were awarded through the OUC and those highlights of opportunities that we did through the fiscal year, you know, and have represented those and given a description as noted in the inception of the budget message as directed.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, if there's no other questions at this point, the budgeted revenues by source are listed in front of your screen right now. 178.9 million, again, just giving you the percentages of where these sources of revenue are coming from with 17% or 92 million, 9.2 million coming in from the fund balance, fund balance forward this year. In ad valorem proceeds, the 13.7 million that we discussed earlier of our collectible rate is 26% of that rev. Okay, I'm sorry, can everybody hear me?
Yes, all right.
I'm so sorry, they're telling me that they couldn't hear me, so I just, okay. Let me move a little here. And in other taxes, it's 13.7 million or 25% of revenue sources there coming in from other taxes. In licensing and permits, we are receiving in $2.2 million projected, 4% of revenue. And in intergovernmental revenue, this is $6.5 million or 12% coming in. In charges for services, note the $4.5 million, 8%. And the, we will be monitoring these right here, charges for services because of the impacts of COVID, as well as the other taxes that we're listing due to the impacts of that. In fines and forfeitures, which is the light blue sliver, again, it doesn't calculate a percentage, but it is 0.73% or 100,000 clocking in at fines and forfeitures. And then miscellaneous revenue, this is $3.1 million of revenue sourcing or 6%. And then finally, the light green, other financing sources is coming in at 0.9, um, excuse me, 13.7 or 25% of budget. Next slide. The counterbalance to this is, of course, for the fiscal year. Our expenditures also balanced at 178,009. The general fund taking in 54 million or 30%. Special revenues taking in 35.3% or, or 35.3 million, excuse me, or 20%. Debt service fund is taking in 4 million and/or 2% of that. Capital projects, 4.3 million and/or 2% of expenditure budget. And then utility funds taking in $70.6 million and/or 40%. Internal service funds in the orange is listed at 9 million and/or 5%. And then finally, economic development funds at 1.7 million and/or 1% of expenditure budget. That is the fiscal year 2020, 2021 expenditure by fund, balanced at 178.9 commensurate to the revenues at 178.9 as well. The expenditures in millions, again, taking it yet another step for you and showing the diversity of that 178 million. 35.3% or 20% of that to reserves. In general services, 11.9 million or 7%. Public safety taking in $31.5 million and/or 17% of budget. Utilities at 48.7 or 27% of budget. Public works, the teal, at 5.7%, excuse me, million or 3%. Parks and Rec in orange taking in 7 million and/or 4%. And then light blue debt service, 8.9 million, 5% of expenditure budget. And economic development, 1.5 million and/or 1%. And then finally, other transfers is $29.4 million and/or 16% of budgeted expenses by function of the City of St. Cloud for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Next slide. In compliance with the agreement, you know, moving forward for the 12th period, beginning in October 1st, I'm making the shift to present the St. Cloud Chamber of Commerce as of August 1st of each year. And then every other day, the city and/or manager may designate that the chamber has to provide the city an annual report with its intended uses for the funds for the city. The city budget allocation for the State of St. Cloud's Chamber of Commerce is $50,000. I have outlined the use of those funds as reported by the Chamber of Commerce with 10,000 going into membership dues, 10, another 10,000 going into community, 4,000 being spent on inclusion. Innovation is being spent a total budget amount of 3,000. Leadership at 5,000, leadership development. Growth at 3,000, and then 5,000 for celebration, this is a 4th of July event, et cetera. And then finally, education at 10,000, making up the 50,000 allocation with a listed intent for those funds. The source of this information is the fiscal year 20 Chamber of Commerce Annual Report, where the PNL was provided, as well as all the requirements set forth from the agreement. Next slide is your general fund balance projected amount for 2020, 2021. What you are looking at is a graphical representation of the blue listing what the policy amounts percentages and our thresholds, 12.5. The actual budgeted amounts and then the goal, which would, has always been set to 30%, and that is commensurate to being adjusted. Our current rates right now, as you can see, in 2019, fiscal year 19, hit almost $11 million of actual. We were 11 million dollars of actual, uh, we were well above, uh, policy. So this is way, uh, this is above policy of 12.5. In fiscal year 20, our projected numbers are 10.25. And, excuse me, I'm gonna, sorry, grab some, um, this presentation, uh, slid back on me, sorry. 2019 was, just so I give you the correct numbers, exact, 10.4 million dollars, almost 10.5. In fiscal year 20, uh, percentage of 19.4. And then fiscal, um, sorry, fund balance for fiscal year 21 projected is 11.02 and/or 19.4 above policy, uh, 19.4 above, um, actual budgeted goals for fiscal year 21. This is commensurate and pending all adjustments from auditors, prepaid and every restricted, uh, any restrictions that we have to do to fund, fund balance. Finally, the staff recommendation, um, overall with this is the approval of Resolution 2020-215R, uh, as well as city councils requested action for the first reading for the approval of Resolution 2020-215R. And if there's any questions, I'll open them for you all to ask.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is anyone in the chamber or online to speak to this item?
I have two that have registered to speak for this item. I have, um, Dirk Webb with the chamber, if there are any questions of him.
Does Mr. Webb wish to speak to this, to the budget?
No, sir.
Okay, you just invited one more question, thank you. And who else do you have?
Mayor, I have Chris Jones.
Okay, Chris, are you wanting to speak?
Mr. Mayor, this is Kathy. I do not have Chris as an attendee at this time.
Okay.
Mayor, that was all I have, and I have no one in the chambers.
Okay, we'll have discussion and our motion by council. Do we have any questions or discussion? If not, do I have a motion? Motion to approve. We have a motion from Councilmember Askew for the approval of Resolution 2020-215R. Do we have a second?
I have a couple of questions after the second.
Okay, are you gonna make the second?
Someone else can, if you want.
I can.
Okay.
Okay, um, so just a couple of questions. Uh, the budget mission, message is a lot better, a lot more detailed than the first go around. We still do have the, um, utility funds flip-flop for stormwater and sanitation on the graph and in the table. And then going through the actual resolution, um, that, that we're approving, I see a couple projects listed under the capital section. And I just didn't know if some of the, some of these are projects, I think that might have already happened, or ones that I haven't seen on here before. Can you just give a description of what this, this section is?
Yeah, on the presentation, Councilman?
Uh, on, on the actual resolution, there's, the first section is the, um, setting the Ad Valorem, second section is kind of the split of the 179 million dollar budget, and then section three, um, has all of the projects, I guess.
Oh, yes, sir. Um, commensurate to, uh, presenting the budget, we've always presented all the capital projects that will be rolling over into the following year, and that's the listing for you that lets you know those projects are, um, and how you determine them is the first two digits are the fiscal year where they were in inception. So if you see a project that is 1820, it was put in, in the year 18, and the sequential number is 20, it is being rolled over for the, uh, would be the, what, fourth, third year. But we present that to you so you know all projects that are being rolled over and the funding is still continuing on for that capital project.
Okay, um, because I do see, like, the electrical plant rehabilitation on there, but I don't think we've had, we have any specific, um, direction on that yet, but we have a, a capital project for it, so I just have some confusion over that.
Uh, yes, sir, I could get you more information on the project. Uh, whenever that was established, I don't have the exact number for you, uh, we established funding and they might have created the project, and because of that direction that they're waiting on, they secured some funding and, and the event that they're gonna present to you, what they're gonna do once they do get that direction. And they, uh, maybe either continue to roll it over as, as they're waiting for this direction to go, um, but we can have more information on that specific project or any of the projects as to why, um, at this point, there are viable projects that they are saying they need to roll over to secure the funding and continue with that. So, being, being said that you, uh, that the council is pending to give direction, I guarantee you that's why it is rolling over, they're securing those funds until they get this such direction, whether to proceed or not.
Okay, um, and then, uh, not, not during this budget discussion, but kind of in future discussions, I kind of want to have a discussion around the FIRE administration trailer. Seems like we're putting money into that as a temporary fix, uh, you know, it might make sense to accelerate that project and do an actual building, we have plenty of property, or, um, if there's, you know, some, some other, some other avenue to go about that, I know they're out of space, um, but I just, I just don't want to, I don't want a trailer there for 10 or 15 years as we depreciate it out, or, um, you know, just kind of the temporary solution. So I just want to figure out something, something permanent there. But I know it's, it's a part of the, the budget here.
Okay, I will note that under FIRE administration now for the trailer, and just to, uh, make sure I captured it, a more permanent solution versus a temporary trailer.
Okay, and then, is Mutter Road a part of the budget? I see the, the projects here, but I didn't see any funding in the budget for it.
The Mutter Road project, that's getting rolled over, so it's not part, it's not being, it was funded originally, um, if, whatever the, uh, I, I don't have that listing in front of me, but if Mutter Road, uh, whatever year the first two numbers are, if you're seeing it, that's the year it was funded, and that money has rolled over consistently until now, and will roll over into the 2021. So those, it's not using or being asked of 2020 or 2021 budget. It was budgeted on that fiscal year and has rolled over up to this year.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing that we'll grab or are budgeted in this fiscal year are the ones that were listed in your preliminary capital, and they should start with a designation of '21.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Matheny?
Oh, I don't have anything, sorry.
Are there any other discussion? Mr. Trace, I just want to be clear, you make, you made a second to that, did you not?
I think Deputy Mayor Matheny made the second.
I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
I said second.
Second, thank you, I appreciate it.
Second, that's what we got confused.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew, a second from, uh, Councilmember Matheny for adoption of Resolution 2020-215R. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Hi.
Councilmember Askew?
Hi.
Councilmember Trace?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
What was that, you're on mute?
Hi.
Hi, there we go.
Mayor Blackwell?
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much, I appreciate all the work the staff has put into this, and thank you so much for your leadership, thank you for the council, for your participation. If there is no other business, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.